Good evening. It's 6:30. We'll get started by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So let's take attendance.
So noted.
Thank you. And now I'll need a motion to approve the minutes or amend the minutes from September 30th, 2025.
So moved?
Support.
So I have a motion in support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. So before I read the introduction, I'd like everyone in the audience to know that Item 4, 6470 Gulf U, has been postponed to a future meeting. Item 7, 6450 Navaco Court, has been removed from the agenda. Item 12, Tax ID Number 1917276016, has been postponed to a future meeting. And Item 15, 1779 Heron Ridge, has also been postponed to a future meeting. So we won't be taking those up tonight. So as a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township for to trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the Neighborhood Association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific request before the board. For a request to be successful tonight, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this provides a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. So let's call the first case, Item 1, 3350 Burning Bush Road. Is the applicant ready?
Good evening. I'm Kevin Berry and I live at 3350 Burning Bush Road.
And can you tell us what your need is for a variance?
Sure. We want to install a generator on the west side of our lot. And there's a 10-foot setback requirement, and we would actually be nine feet from the property line. So the request is for a dimensional variance of a foot, so we can put that in. We've talked to our neighbors and they're fine with it. And we've also agreed to put in screening, so that it won't be visible from the neighbor's side. And then from the front yard, we have quite a bit of vegetation that prevents any view of it as well. We did also talk to and got approval from Bloomfield Village Association, the manager Kathy Weisenborn. And so we're here, I'm here, to try to get approval from this board to go forward.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
Quick question. Your condenser is still in that, is in that same location?
So we don't have one there now? We don't have a generator yet.
No, the AC condenser is also in that location?
Oh, right. Yes. Yep. Yep.
Any other questions from the board? So I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion.
Thank you.
With regard to the appeal at 3350 Burning Bush Road for the dimensional variance required for the generator encroaching one foot into the required 10-foot side yard setback, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with a strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the size of the lot. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason that it is completely surrounded by evergreen plantings. The unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given that this is a little more narrow than other lots in the neighborhood, and it's not self-created. So if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. And that's it.
Support.
Motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Calling next item, Item 2, 3501 South Bradway Boulevard. Is the applicant ready? Very good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Basically what he said.
Okay. Yeah, it's very similar. It's good. We like that.
We're looking for a one-foot variance as well. We made every effort to try to relocate the generator to a spot that would have been more conducive to the setback. However, because the rear of the house is fully, it's a full deck all the way across the back. The west side of the house is all driveway. And the east side is the only location that we actually can install it. Plus, all the utilities are there, gas, electric, and such. We, we had, and we seek, and we sought, and we got approval from the village board. And we're here to appeal for a one-foot variance.
Any questions from the board? Opens the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing. Bring it back for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure thing.
In regards to the appeal at 5301 South Bradway Boulevard for the generator encroaching one feet into the required 10-foot side yard setback, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with a strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because this is a more narrow area, and there is no other place in the back of the side yard for him to put this generator. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by the reason of the fact that he's going to completely screen this around so that they cannot see it. Unique circumstances of this property have been demonstrated. Again, you cannot put it in the back or the side because of the driveway as well as the deck. This is not self-created because you didn't build the house and put it, you know, that close to the lot line. If this is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to the installation. Additional evergreen, evergreen plantings shall be required to screen the generator from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the generator at the time of planting.
Support.
I have motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Request is granted.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself from the next item.
Okay. I think that's wise. So calling the next item, 3650 Green Tree Road. Item 3.
Good evening, board members. My name is Terry Kalinsky. I live at 3650 Green Tree Road. I am seeking permission requests and two-dimensional variance requests related to building a detached garage on our property. No, it's okay. I love these pictures. I haven't seen all of these yet. So the two-dimensional variance requests are related to, one is that it is more than 50% of the total square foot, like the living square footage of our home. The second-dimensional variance request is that we are requesting an additional two feet into the rear and side setbacks of our lot. This will allow us, just given the existing driveway and house and garage location, it will allow proper ingress and egress from the detached garage. So that's why we're requesting that two feet additional to the side and to the rear. We have spoken with all of our adjacent neighbors, and we have their full support. We have received permission from our HOA as well, and they have sent an email saying that they have approved this. These pictures. I did want to just share that we did have, there was a lot of planning that went into this detached garage. Lots of hours planning this, including matching the existing brick of the home. And also to have minimal impact to the existing landscaping that is in our yard. I just want to thank you for your consideration for this appro, or this request, or these requests. We are eager to continue to invest in our home. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the board? So where is your garage currently?
So in the black outline of that house, it's in the, I guess, the, like, bottom left corner.
And is that garage going to stay?
Yes.
Okay. So you have this in addition to the existing garage?
Yes. The reason that we're wanting the detached garage, I forgot to mention that, is due to our business that we have. This will fit a tractor and a trailer and a work truck and other things associated with that business.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
So I'm going to put both of them together, the permission request and the dimensional variance. So, so for the permission request regarding the appeal at 3650 Green Tree Road for the accessory structure, I move the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as, you know, containing your equipment and household items is the right thing to do. And then with regard to the dimensional variance required for the detached garage encroaching two feet into the required 16-foot rear and side yard setbacks, and then additionally, the proposed garage will cause the total accessory space to exceed 50% of the ground floor area of the house. I move that this dimensional variance, hold on here, let me get the verbiage right. I move that the variance be approved as requested, and based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the, basically, the unique shape of the lot and the way the house is established on it. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason that it is consistent with our homes in the area, and the garage is in an appropriate area and oriented on the lot properly. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given that the existing floor plan has limitations, and this is not self-created. So if approved, all application for necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be attained prior to construction. And I am going to add that a single-family affidavit is required to be submitted to the township.
Support.
I have motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Your request is granted.
Thank you so much.
You did a very nice job. Calling the next item, Item 4. Nope, that's postponed, sure. Item 5, 958 Harsdale, or 959. Is the applicant here? 959 Harsdale.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to move this to the end of the agenda?
Support.
So I have a motion in support to move this item to the end of the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one's moved to the end of the agenda. Let's go to Item 6, 2705 Turtle Ridge.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Dotson from J. Wayne Construction. We are asking to impose into the natural feature setback to build a home on Turtle Ridge. We've done this many times in the past, and as you can see, it's a, the impact, actually, we, the correction, there's a, asking for 21.7 feet, but it's 9.6 feet, not 21.7 feet as encroaching. So it's not as, as much as that calls for.
You said that you encroach only nine?
Yeah, so from the picture, it doesn't look like.
It's not 21, no.
21 feet.
No.
I just want to clarify, though, because we also call out the area in which the natural features may have installation of sod and landscaping, and I think that goes beyond.
Oh, I see.
Okay, so that's why we included the whole thing.
Very good.
Just to clarify.
So how far is the, so you're saying the structure?
Is only 9.6, yeah.
Okay, and then the rest of the variances for landscaping?
Sod, yeah.
Is this a temporary encroachment or a permanent encroachment? I mean, is it just for the building?
Permanent, it's the house.
Okay.
Yeah, the house and then the sod.
Okay.
And then in discussing this with the staff, evidently, the wetlands, you know, in this development has actually expanded a bit, which makes some of these last lots much closer than when the development was put in 20 years ago, which is an interesting thing. So if you look at that aerial, you can kind of see the irregular shape to the wetlands as it's expanded. So we don't have an aerial from 20 years ago, but any other feedback from the staff on that? Just because it's part of the, part of the hardship here is the.
No, I think that you stated it very accurately in terms of the change.
So any other questions from the board on this? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion or questions? Anything anybody doesn't understand? Are you siding the entire area there?
Yeah.
Okay. Because what's there now? What kind of terrain?
It's like a marsh.
Okay. That's what it looks like from the.
Spotty and.
Okay.
It's covered by trees, so there's not a lot of growth right there right now.
So the reason you put the sod is so it would be usable space as opposed to the marsh?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay.
What's the size of this home?
It's about 3,500 square foot range.
Can we go back to the aerial? I just want to.
So is that smaller area, Andrea? That's the initial wetlands? Or am I reading this correctly?
I can't exactly say what the, that aerial is not intended to depict the wetlands. It's just an aerial.
It's just kind of a.
Fair enough.
General idea.
I guess we can do some discussion if we're going to discuss.
Yeah, yeah, we're discussing.
So I want to go with just the improvement portion, where the permanent structure of the house, when you actually look at the depth of the house without the garages, we're talking about 37 feet, right? The depth of the house without the two garages, then you add the garages to it, which are 24 feet, and they're basically just asking for a little cut out there. That's not an overly big house. And when we talk about, especially Turtle Ridge, so I don't really have a problem with that portion because actually, when you look at the size of this house and what they're looking at, if you want to go back, Corey, to, well, actually, I don't know where it'd be. Yeah, that. There's a, in our pack, there's a depiction of the plot plan. That makes some sense to me. Now, completely removing almost the entire natural feature setback and putting sod, that's what I'm kind of having a tough time with. But understanding that the size of the home, again, it's not overly deep. And again, a house of this size, you want to have garages of that size. I can understand that. So.
He's just looking, I think, for some backyard space.
Well, there's not much backyard space, and we do have to construct it, so we're going to, 10 to 12 feet of just driving machines around it, it's going to chew up the grass there as well.
But you could put it back to the original native plantings as a temporary?
Yeah, that's possible.
Versus the permanent one?
I built the house next door and we did wildflower seeds, and it was really nice. So that might be something that, and this is a spec house as well, so the customer might have grass.
It's a tough one, too, because, I mean, I agree with you, it's not a very large home. That's why I asked for the size of the home.
It doesn't have a backyard.
It doesn't have a backyard, but then again, the natural feature setback is.
And how is it not self-created? I wish you wouldn't have told me it was a spec house. That makes it so much harder.
Yeah, well, so to give you some backstory, I started Turtle Lake, building homes in there in 2000. And, and this, we were doing homes, I actually had built like six homes on the street, in fact, even the one next door. So, you know, like I said, the wetland moves back up and down, and so it's very difficult. These lots are very steep, they're very shallow. And when Dave Payne was the, we had a deal worked out with the development and township, and there really wasn't an enforcement of the, of the natural feature setback. So, you know, to ask for this is really minor. I mean, the garages aren't that large. They're not overly large garages. These lots are very difficult to build on. It's about a 20-foot slope regardless, so it's a lot of hardships involved.
Yeah, it's a tough, it's a tough site.
How is the, how is the distance to the wetland area relative to the neighbors or the house next door?
Say it again?
How does it compare to the house next door in terms of the proximity toward the natural feature setback?
You mean, is the distance between the natural feature setback for the next door?
No, how does it compare to the house next door in terms of, is it closer to the natural feature setback compared to the house next door? Or is it the same, or is it farther?
The house next door, to the right, as you look at now, is closer.
Okay.
To the natural features.
So the one you're building would technically be a little further away?
Further away, correct.
But you said, because you built that house, the one next to it?
Correct, yeah.
But you put native plantings behind the house?
On the left-hand side, in between our lots, the client didn't want to put grass, so we planted wildflower seeds.
And I can appreciate these are tough lots. I really do, and you have a great issue. There are several lots over here. I'm just having a tough time negating the entire natural feature setback. So we're not trying to negotiate with you. I'm just trying to understand that. The other part I can appreciate and understand. Again, a 35-foot deep home is, that's not very deep, especially for a ranch. It's not.
Yeah, I tend to agree. You can see that it's, you know, pinching towards where your buildable envelope is. I appreciate that the front of the house is at its required setback. I guess I'm just wondering again about the, so I don't have any issues with the house, just the plantings back there. I mean, that's self-created? Like, how much lawn that you want to provide?
Well, you know, it's, it's a question of what are we actually saving? Like, we have, we want to, we're going to put grass back as opposed to, right now, there, there is literally nothing. It's just lumps. And if you, if you walk down there, I mean, I know you guys go and drive and see, have you walked down that back line? There's deer trail in there. I mean, there's really not a lot there. So whatever we do put there is going to improve what's, what is there. And the, the line, the natural feature setback moves with the, the wetland, so it's really hard.
I know, but nature's there. I mean, that's what a.
Well, grass or, or.
I think some of the concern is that the natural feature setback is intended to be just that. And I think the concern, when you put grass in, then there's other things associated with the maintenance of grass. So it kind of removes that, that cleansing natural features. So I think that's kind of what, what the board is concerned about, is why it couldn't be a native species. So I'm just trying to, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's sort of what I'm hearing, is the idea is that that natural features is supposed to be more of a native as opposed to grass. So I think that's what their concern is. Yeah.
Exactly. Would you be open to, in the area that you're encroaching into, would you be open to replacing it with, you know, plantings that are, would be native to a natural feature?
Sure, yeah. That'd be nice.
Because then I can see that that would truly be, you know, disturbing it at the most minimal level possible.
Sure.
I agree. I understand it's not grass, but that the intention of the natural feature setback is for those more indigenous plants that look that.
Now, this is just a question among the board, but is it feasible? I mean, I don't know if this is the right question, but is it feasible to ask more of a variance from the front setback versus the rear setback? You see what I mean? So if, because the home would be moved forward and given a variance?
Yeah, we went through this.
I don't know if it.
Does that make sense?
Well, but isn't there, in that neighborhood, they have certain restrictions on how far the house can be?
Yeah, Turtle Lake's pretty strict about.
So the HOA did restriction.
So the HOA, yeah. I understand the.
Which he probably knows better than we do after building six homes.
Yeah, we're not going closer.
I think this is easier for him to do whatever we need here versus.
Yeah, I, the house would be right spot. It's just what's he going to plant behind the house?
So can you tell me exactly what's the, what is the number you need for the house?
I would say we need, well, we're encroached.
You said it was nine feet?
Nine. I mean, we need another 10 because we're going to drive a tractor on the back.
But that would be a temporary, right? Because technically, you'd be planting native planting.
Yeah.
So for the permanent structure, it is how many feet?
It's 9.3.
9.3.
Well, not with the.
But it would be 9.3 for permanent, and then it would be a temporary along to do the work in the.
In the natural features.
In the natural features, which then he said he would agree to put plantings back that were native to the area. If, um.
Instead of grass?
That's what he said he would want to do.
Well, he's kind of got a glazed look in his eyes.
I'm like, okay.
Is that not what you?
To be honest, this is like.
You look a little dizzy.
This is probably the 10th time I've been to the board to ask for the, this variance. And it takes longer for me to walk in the door than to walk out because when Turtle Lake developer Victor International, they, again, had a deal prior to with the township about the natural features and a symposium in it, and they were giving, granting the full natural feature setback in that. Because a lot of times, customers might put in a pool or, or some patio, so they really didn't have much discussion regarding it. But, I mean, I appreciate, you know, the concern. And if you look at what's there right now, even grass would improve upon what's there right now.
I think that, I agree with you in the sense that it would improve upon the use of the property for the person living in the home. My concern, I can't necessarily speak for the board, but it sounds like, my concern is that to try and minimize the disturbance to this natural feature setback, you're, we'll say we're 10 feet into it already for the structure, and then you have another 15 feet of somehow trying to, well, 21.
Point seven.
The difference. To incorporate some outdoor living space potentially, as well as restore the air, the natural feature setback to somewhat what it should be. And when, when you say like, ah, it's unusable and whatever, finding a fine balance and being courteous of the native plantings has been kind of a hot button within the township to preserve the natural feature setback, to preserve the wetlands, on and on and on.
Yeah, I mean, I have a thought. We can, you know, approve the house and let you come back with some, with a, a plantings plan for that area. I would propose, you probably need, I'm an architect, you probably need five feet of some kind of walking, you know, around the rest of the house. But the rest of it, if you could come with a plan that, unfortunately, we are looking at these things more carefully for natural plantings. And I just throw five feet, eight feet, but not the full 25.
Yeah, well, I would probably say 10 feet away, like a walking distance away from the house because if you notice the, it's curved, it's at an angle. It doesn't just go straight across. So it bumps up in the middle and then it drops back down. So it's.
I don't know how you feel about coming back with a plan about where that area would be in the dimensions of, say, lawn or whatever, and then some natural plantings.
Yeah, unless you want to grant it where it's, it's approved as is, but then we could only set grass 10 feet from the structure, and then from that point on, it would be maybe a wildflower seeding packet that's natural to natural features.
I, I think that makes sense.
But now we're, we're honestly, he asked for 21.7. If we give him 9.7 plus 10 feet, we're literally arguing over two feet now.
Well, five feet actually is 25 feet, right? So it's like 19.
But your dimensional encroachment was 21.7 is what you asked for.
No, no, well, so if you look at it, well, in that one area, the other area is, we're not really encroaching hardly at all. So it'd be, you'd have 15 feet. So the left side of the house, you have 15 feet of.
Yeah, that's what I looked at it.
Yeah.
We're giving them 10.
It's just one area where.
There's 25-foot natural features setback, and we're going to let them put grass. There's 25-foot natural features setback, we're going to let them put grass 10 feet away from the house, right? Isn't that what you said, then the rest is going to be natural plantings, the remaining 15 feet?
Correct.
And that, no? Did I misunderstand that? Is my math off?
No, is that right?
That's good.
Yeah.
We give them 10.
Well, I'm just, that seems reasonable to me, I guess I'd rather not have to come back with the plan, I think we can go forward. I think the staff would appreciate if we made a decision.
All right, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Give it a whirl.
With respect to the appeal at 959 West Harsdale Road, I-
Turtle Ridge.
Turtle Ridge, 2705.
I'm on the wrong one, I'm on the wrong page.
The famous development.
With respect to the appeal at 2705 Turtle Ridge Drive, I make a motion to approve the dimensional variance for the home to encroach the 9.2 feet tied to the drawings that you have presented into the natural feature setback. I move this be approved based on the drawings submitted and the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty, given the width of the, the depth of the lot, the modest-sized house and the need for garage, compliance with the front yard setback, would be unduly burdensome for any other situation on this house. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the association approval and the similarity to the adjacent houses. In regards to the dimensional variance from the natural setbacks feature for plantings in that area, I propose a maximum of 10 feet, or a minimum of 15 feet from the natural feature setback, be addressed with natural plantings. Should this motion be approved, application for all necessary permits be made within one year and all permits obtained prior to construction. Yep, that's just a motion.
I just want to make sure that the discussion is about the temporary encroachment as well.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure.
Oh, I mean, I can amend that we understand temporary encroachment during construction is to be permitted for the whole, yeah.
10 feet is what he asked for, in addition to the 9.3.
For temporary? No, I thought-
Wouldn't that be the 10 feet from the house that's going to be grass and the rest?
I'm going to back out of this conversation, I just want to make sure there was discussion, so let's the board discuss that.
So I understand there may be temporary encroachment during construction that might be the 25, but the final installation would be no more than 15 feet.
Correct.
Or no closer than 15 feet to the natural features. And I can add to the motion that temporary during construction-
But then it would have to be restored, right?
And then, right, that additional, that 15 feet be restored.
So what, are you, is that, that's part of the motion, why don't you state what the temporary encroachment can be and what the conditions are about restoration?
Okay, yep, I amend my motion to approve up to the 25 feet for construction purposes, but the 15, anything within 15 feet of the natural features is to be restored per, you know, natural.
With natural plantings?
Plantings.
Native plantings.
Support. Okay, so we have a motion and support.
Support.
We have two supports, any discussion? Discussion of the motion.
So, I just want to make sure I understand, that you're saying ultimately it's a 10-foot encroachment. Temporarily, it'll be up to 25, potentially while building, but-
And then the whole area gets restored.
Then that gets restored, but, but the permanent encroachment is 10 feet.
Yes.
Exactly.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, that's remarkable.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, your request as modified is approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you for the patience.
Calling item 8, 2437 Lost Tree Way.
Are we skipping seven?
Seven, yeah, seven got postponed.
Seven was postponed, yeah.
I did the same thing.
Hello? So this is a motion to add a fireplace and pergola to an existing back patio. The fireplace would be a vented gas fireplace. If it, if it matters, we have, all the neighbors have signed off on it, the association architect has signed off on it.
Yep, any questions from the board? We'll open this to public, anyone like to speak on this? Close the public hearing, bring it back.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion in regards to the permission request at 2437 Lost Tree Lane for the pergola and gas fireplace. I move that the request be approved as amended based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structures are appropriate to the neighborhood. This is a very common accessory structure in terms of pergolas and gas fireplaces. The accessory structure should not be objectional to nearby residents for the fact that it took the time to actually get their approval and their input. So they have approved that as well. And with that said, if approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. And additional evergreens planting should be required to screen the pergola and gas fireplace from public view and at the time of installation for 12 months of the year. Oh, I'm sorry, and they shouldn't meet or exceed the height of the, is there a fence?
No.
Well, the-
Okay, so they should be screened from public view?
Yeah.
Support.
I have a motion, support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
I was calling item 9, 5385 Long Meadow Road. Is the applicant ready?
So-
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we move this to the end of the meeting.
Support?
So, I have a motion, support, to move this item to the end of the meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This item is moved. So calling the next item, item 10, 5931 Blandford.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, my name's David Lawson, and I work for Terra Breeze, the company that constructed the pergola. So, I was kind of sent here last, quite honestly, the homeowner's not here, I think that we uploaded a file to you. And I believe we're seeking permission to have the structure remain in place.
So it's sitting on top of like a patio?
Sitting on top of a patio, exactly. I believe the plan is to erect foliage and arborvitae to block the visibility of neighbors. It is not interrupting thoroughfares or pedestrian walkways. I believe the association president has approved this as well.
Do you know what the height is from the ground to the top of the pergola?
I think it's just under 14 feet, 13.8 feet.
Okay. Any other questions? Open this to the public, anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing, we're back for discussion. Motion?
I can make a motion.
Okay.
In regards to the appeal at 5931 Blandford, for the accessory structure, I move the request to be approved as submitted based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the size of the structure is compatible with the rear yard of the home, and it's also appropriate as there's structures like that in the neighborhood, and it does meet the setbacks, it's not too close to the rear or the sides. If this is approved, the, the structure will have to be screened 365 days a year and install, the vegetation should be installed at the height of the pergola when it is constructed, or as it's already constructed. And the application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing pergola.
Support?
Motion, support, any discussion?
Just, I would like to make it very clear, you're asking for forgiveness on something?
Yes.
So, the board is being very nice on this, because they could just tell you to take it down, but the plantings must meet or exceed the height of it at planting, so if it's 14 feet, 14 foot-
We should be-
12 months of the year.
Yeah.
So I understand you got here last minute, and you're taking the, you know, the beating here, but, so just advise your clients that that might be a checkbook thing, but just take it to keep their-
In other words, it's not to grow to 14 feet.
No, no.
You're to install it at that height, exactly.
Can I just ask, isn't it 8.6 feet tall?
But not from the ground to the-
Okay.
Yeah, I was asking from the ground, just-
Thank you.
So, and because of that, it needs to be completely screened, so, that's the only discussion I have, Chairman.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted, and we look forward to this screening.
Yeah, I'm sure he does too.
Okay. So calling the next item, item 11, 3329 Chestnut Road.
My name is Ali El Hamari, I'm the homeowner. I want to apologize and ask for your forgiveness, we made a mistake hiring a contractor who did not do the right thing. And I have my landscape architect, Matt Mosher, and a wetland consultant, Brooks Williamson, who put a plan together to restore the wetland to its natural features.
Okay, do you have any details about the plan to restore?
Yeah, so-
Did you want to have?
All the technical-
Yeah, you can have that.
Thank you, Matt Mosher, helping Ali out here with this project at 3329 Chestnut. He moved into the house and, from what I understand, hired a contractor that did some work down by the water. The EGLE was called and they gave him a violation, so he hired myself and Brooks Williamson to come up with a plan to restore the area. There were several meetings out on site with EGLE to come up with the different shrubbery and components that would restore this back to where they were happy with. Subsequently, this plan was submitted to the township for review, this is a plan that the EGLE had supported. So basically, what the, what the mix is, it's a mix of wet-footed shrubs that are, that are rooted, as well as different seed mixes to essentially do just that, is to bring back what was technically originally there. These mixes are based on our recommendations and recommendations in coordination with EGLE. So, happy to answer any specific questions, but essentially a plan that is-
What was the work that was done that disrupted this area?
They, there was trees and shrubs that they basically destroyed. And it's not supposed to be touched, I was not involved at the time. But the contractor was paid and he disappeared, he's, he's not in the country, he was deported.
Okay, but he wasn't installing stone or walkway or-
No, there's no, there's no-
There's no path or-
It's all just dirt and-
It looked like he was basically grading the lawn out and went too close to the water, is what it came down to.
Okay, so that makes more sense. Any other questions from the board? Open this to the public, anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back.
I guess the only question I have is, so you said this is an Eagle-supported plan, do they provide you with, like, approval of this plan? Or do they have to approve it based on us?
Yeah, so they've, there's, there's two approvals, there's the EGLE, and then there's you guys. EGLE deals with everything below the ordinary high watermark, you guys are everything above it. So this plan that is coming before you had to be supported by them before we could bring it to you guys. And so that's what myself and Brooks were working through, is to get that support before it came before you.
What Matt's referring to is the township's floodplain and wetland permit, that's what he's referring to. And so the ZBA approval is kind of part of that package, that that, the township won't release the wetland permit until they get approval from the ZBA for their encroachments.
Thank you very much.
With that, I'll make a motion.
Okay, I think we're ready.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the dimensional variance for the restoration work at 3329 Chestnut Road, Chestnut Run Road. In regards to, I move that the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. Because of the presence of wetlands, if we prevent him from restoring them, they won't be restored. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, I would imagine that the adjoining neighbors, as well as regular township communities, would love to have this wetlands back restored to its original, or at least restored to its native planting. Unique circumstances of the property began because of the existing wetlands. And although this was self-created, we are moving to bring it back to its natural state. So with that said, if approved, the motion must include applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to commencing work.
Excuse me, miss, sir, miss, sir, it's hard for me to hear her based on your guys' conversation, can you do me a favor? Okay, thank you so much, support.
I have a motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, you guys are cruising through items tonight, I had five and nine, did you guys already go through all those? Can I present them or no?
We did, we moved it to the end.
Oh, you did, okay, I'll wait till the end.
Okay.
We always cruise through the agenda.
That's why he thought he would be okay.
Item 13, 4062 Overlay, is the applicant ready?
Hello, we're here to propose a sports court, tennis court, not necessarily a variance, but just talk about the dimensions of the sports court to get the recommended size of the sports court. What was the size of? Yeah. So, we're requesting the 108 by 52.
I'm sorry, can we get your name and address for the record?
Oh, sure, it's Christopher Bowati, 4062 Overlay Lane. It's a house that we're demoing down, doing a construction, looking to build, you know, I have three children and we love tennis, and trying to build a really nice backyard and nice home for everybody. So we're moving to the area. So we made some changes, do you want to talk about the changes we've made with the variance and things with our layout? We are requesting basically the size of what an official size of a tennis court would be, and we removed the cabana from our plans to not really ask for any variance, correct?
Correct.
So in a perfect situation, we would like the official 120 by 60, if that would be allowed, because that's what a true tennis court is at that size, and we would have arborvitae and replace all the trees and have a 10-foot fence around, and we sent the fence in, we also sent the information on the plane elevation and the topographic survey that we also added with the drainage, so there wasn't any issues with that. And everything would be in the back of the property, there's no lights, there's no basketball, very quiet, and it's all going to be enclosed, and pretty much none of the neighbors would see any of the court at all. So yeah, that's why we're here today. So yeah, that's why we're here today.
Yeah, so what we're looking at here, my name is Xander Bogarts, I'm the architect. What we're looking at here is the previous site plan that was approved in July of this year. We were before the board. We had asked for one twenty by sixty, and we had some back and forth, and we went to seventy-eight by thirty-six, which is the playing area only, no overrun. So we agreed to do that, and then we got back and I spoke with Chris, and we said, no, that's not going to work for the sport of tennis, we need a wider. So this, the, again, this site plan is the one from July, we've since modified it. The tennis court is a similar size, the cabana is gone. We don't have a cabana at all. And we rotated the pool ninety degrees from this configuration that you see in front of you right now. So, I have the current one here that was submitted, if you want. So, the arborvities, you can see here the setback, the sixteen-foot setback, thirty-five-foot setback, and then again, a sixteen, we're well within those setbacks. So as you all know, the sports court can go further into those setbacks, we're not even doing that, we're staying within the bounds. We're showing arborvities on three sides, those will be ten feet tall. We would like a ten-foot netting between the arborvities and the sports court, but last time we were here, that ten-foot fence netting was not recommended, six-foot was proposed. So we would prefer the ten-foot, but if six-foot's what we'll get, we'll accept a six-foot. And you can see here, the cabana is gone, and we've rotated the pool ninety degrees. We are under the allowable square footage by nineteen square feet. I can get the actual numbers, but it's, we're allowed six thousand five hundred and fifteen square feet, and we're at six thousand four hundred and ninety-six, so just under. So really, this is a permission request, we're not asking for any variances.
Except for the fence.
And that's where we're at.
The fence would be a variance, right, the ten-foot?
I'm sorry, yes. Ten-foot would be the variance for the netting, correct?
When you say allowable surface area, what are you referring to?
I'm sorry, say it again?
When you say allowable surface area, what are you referring to?
Okay, good question, so.
I think that's a different ordinance, so we don't review that in the township.
Okay.
I think it may be, so, sorry to interrupt you, but we.
Surface area? Are you talking about the playing size of this court, or surface area? I'm not sure what.
I don't know.
You just said the total area, you're under by nineteen feet, I think that's your question. What are you referring to?
In the ordinance, it says you're allowed a certain percentage in the rear setback, unless I've completely misunderstood. You're allowed a certain percentage in the rear setback, and then a different percentage between the rear setback and the rear of your house. And you add that up, and that's the size of the accessories.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't think that's part of our zoning ordinance.
No?
No.
But thank you for the extra homework.
Well then, Andrew, I'm confused, because you and I spoke before about accessory structures versus accessory uses, and how would you?
I don't, I'm not sure, but all I know is what's before the board now is a permission request for a sports court and the ten-foot high fence, that's what's before the board right now. We want to have an offline conversation about another request that I don't feel is part of our ordinance, we can, but I think that right now, I think the board understands the request is for the sports court and the fence.
Do we have any other questions from the board?
After public comment.
Okay. Open this to public, anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public comment and bring it back. Go ahead.
I want to thank you for some of the additional information you put in this packet versus the last one we approved it. Understanding the overruns, and after doing some research, understanding that, basically you're asking, with the new size you're proposing, which is the one oh eight by fifty-two, it gives you eight feet on each side for any running after tennis balls, as well as fifteen front and back. So the point of what you're trying to, what you're asking for, and the rationale for it, is the fact that if you're running after the ball, it's not just the inbounds area, it is as you're running for to play those, you don't want to be going off of that surface in order to trip or fall or cause any harm to the players, if I understand.
That's correct.
So I appreciate the additional information, because that makes a lot more sense versus I want this size.
Right.
And when I, when we research it, it doesn't show that.
Right.
So that's where it helps when we have the applicants here, because then they can explain it's not just a want, here's the need.
Yeah. And the need is, I mean, the full size of a court is one twenty, I mean, that's the official size, and, but I guess there was some pushback last time, I wasn't here, I was out of the country, and then it didn't make quite much sense, and I'm like, how did this go so wrong? You know, but.
So I, so I think a lot of the pushback from the board is, we originally started with sports courts that were like thirty by fifty, or half basketball hoops.
Yeah.
And then they just keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and we're trying to just understand some of these different needs, and depending on if the applicant's here or not, or the architect, they don't necessarily can convey the emotion of the sport, they can speak to the ordinance, or the impact to the neighbors, or the total non-permissible square footage of the lot, that's what they're really good at, but not understanding the sport sometimes.
Yeah. So I mean, the sport is a true sport, a true basketball court is the one twenty by eighty, I mean, one twenty by sixty, that's, that is, if you go to any court in the country, it's, that's the size.
Well, I think sometimes people also have a concern about potential runoff when you have these large, flat surfaces, and with the torrential rains that we're getting, I mean, I can speak from only experience, there's a lot of runoff. And so sometimes when you have these large, flat surfaces, that's also a concern.
So that's when we did this, we did this topographic, we paid this, yeah, it's a one percent slope, and he says there would be no issues with this drainage. That's, here, maybe, that's, that's this right here. He did a survey.
Which I agree with you, that is, one of my big concerns, is water runoff, but after talking with Andrew, again, this is a brand-new construction, so you're going to have a civil engineer, you're going to have people as part of the drainage plan, but also when we get these permits, as part of it, our building department does look into this to make sure that they have a drainage plan or have some type of civil engineer who stamps it, which is what this gentleman is, he's your liability.
Right.
And he's worth that, if you pay him, and he's your liability, which is great.
What about the ten-foot fence?
Yeah, I'd say we were confused, and I think you've kind of clarified it, because I looked this up, you know, as part of this agenda item, the dimensions of the singles court are seventy-eight by twenty-seven, doubles court is seventy-eight by thirty-six, and then there's a recommended buffer area, which is what you've added, which is necessary because the lines are not where everyone plays.
Right.
Right, so you've got to stand behind it to serve, you've got to go back for certain shots, so this now makes sense.
Yeah. Any thoughts on the ten-foot screen?
Yeah, so typically, I think the ten-foot fence is too high, and.
It supports six.
So we have six, I'd say, I'd go to seven, but I'm okay with six.
Is this a fence or netting?
So it's a netting, so, I mean, six-foot, I mean, we'll be chasing a lot of balls, I mean, I don't know. I mean, you know, so, I mean, I'm assuming with the arborvities being ten-foot, at least that will probably stop a lot of the balls from going into the yard, but you kind of need ten-foot only because, I mean, six-foot's like here, they just bounce, I mean, they're going to go all over the place.
So you're planting ten-foot.
Yeah, the arborvities are going to be above that, that are going to be blocking everything, so.
Yeah, so they're screened, so I give a eight, I give.
I don't have a problem with the ten feet if it's netting, that's why I wanted to get the clarification. And I know with sports, you do need.
And it's black, it's the black netting?
It's the black. We sent a picture in, I don't know if you have that on your file.
So can we have a motion?
It's going to be screened.
Okay, now with the buffer area and the netting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Sure, that'd be great.
Board is ready. Okay, so with regard to the permission request at four zero six two overlay lane, for the, I'm going to call it a tennis court, granted it is a sports court, and it does not include the cabana, so I'd like to make that clarification. I move that the request be approved as modified. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven point six standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood, as there are many sports courts within Bloomfield Township. And I'd like to also note that the location of this accessory structure does not hinder or discourage, discourage the use of adjacent properties due to the fact that it'll be screened with ten-foot-tall evergreen plantings. With the dimensional variance, I make a motion, or I move that it also be approved as modified, actually, no, approved as presented, because the fence being ten feet tall, exceeding the four-foot height limit, I'm going to suggest that we stick with the ten feet because it's going to be screened. So I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance is unduly burdensome, based on the fact that this is reasonable use of the property, there's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by the fact that it is screened with evergreen plantings. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given that it's actually a very good, perfect use of the property, and this is not self-created. So, let me scroll down here. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to commencing construction, and additional evergreen plantings shall be required to screen the fence from public view, and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the structure at the time of installation for twelve months of the year.
Support.
Should we have anything about illumination, or it's sports courts only, daytime hours?
Could you, could you add that verbiage? You're good, so what is it? There should be no illumination, and what was?
And the use is during daytime hours only.
I agree with that, and the use should be within daytime hours only. Thank you.
So we have a motion, support, clarification?
Yep. Support is in.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Thank you for coming back and helping us.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Calling the next item, six-six-six-six, Wing Lake Road.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Casa Malalo, six-six-six-six, Wing Lake Road. Seeking approval of permission for a twelve-by-twenty greenhouse that will be approximately twelve feet in height. It'll sit in the back and the rear yard within all the required setbacks, and it'll match the architecture of the house. And at the time of erection, it will have all the arborvitie covering it, that'll be at least twelve feet high.
So you won't be able to see this from any direction?
No, we already have some of the green giant arborvitie in place that are at that height, and it'll just be a continuation of it. So from Sly Court is probably going to be the most view that you'll see of the greenhouse, and that's where we're going to continue the row.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Open this to the public for comment, anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing.
Well, you have a comment.
Oh?
Were you?
Good evening.
Brian Ritter with Wing Lake Farms Association, or Wing Lake Farms, Inc., resident, sixty-eight-hundred Franklin Road. Actually, I used to own this house. I know the property quite well, I cleared the backyard. The only thing, we did communicate with the homeowner regarding this matter, and everything is within all of the setbacks. The only thing that we would ask is that it be properly screened, more or less, primarily from the Sly Court side. It appears as though they have already done some arborvities along the back line, which is the adjoining neighbor, which half their house is visible to that property. So we would ask that the board approve this application on behalf of the homeowner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else like to speak on this matter? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, regards to the property at four-five-seven-three Kirk Caldey Road, I move that the.
That's, sorry.
Six-six-six.
Number fourteen.
I'm mad at it.
It's because, it's because we're starting half an hour early, I think is the reason.
We're skipping items and.
Some of the agenda items are.
I'm looking at the right drawing.
Jumping, yeah.
I'll start over.
We're moving at lightning speed during this meeting, as Matt has told us, so we know that.
I would like to make a motion, approve permission request in regard to six-six-six Wing Lake for the accessory structure per the drawings attached in Landscape Plant. Move they be submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven point six standards, because the size of the accessory structure is modest and compatible with adjoining properties, the use as a potting shed or whatever is common in our township, and the location will not hinder or discourage adjacent use of property due to its location and the screening that has been suggested, especially along Sly Court. Should this motion be approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits obtained prior to construction, again, the evergreen plantings, particularly that your neighbors have mentioned, to the height of the structure when it's installed.
Support. Motion to support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Item fifteen has been postponed, so I'll call you item sixteen. Good evening.
I reside at forty-five-seventy-three Kirk Caldey, with my fiancee, who is reassembling herself, she grew up at this house. So there's a little history there and how things were done, and what we're trying to do to improve them. What we're requesting is to have a pool shed that was moved on easement earlier on when we were doing remodeling the house. One of the inspectors said, hey, do yourself a favor and move this, you know, because, and we'll redo your plan, put you approved site, and that pad for a future shed, pool shed. So hence, this is where we're at, and I'm requesting that we approve that site for a shed, all the setbacks are there. It's more than thirty feet from the back, it's probably almost a hundred feet to the back lot line. And there is, one of the pictures I sent in, or plots I put in for a screen, as we look at it, it would be to the right side of the house, that's where you would see probably the possible shed, and we're going to be planting there anyways. But it can't be done right now, it'd have to be done in the spring because of the size of bushes and the frost line. Other than that, I don't know what other recommendations you would have. I know there is a shed that's there that was moved, that was from her dad, built back in nineteen sixty-eight.
Is that shed going to stay, or go?
That'll go, that'll go.
Got some answer?
Unless, unless we're allowed to keep it, you know.
No, the better answer is the shed is going to go.
Okay, there you go. That's a simple, yeah, so that shed will be taken down as soon as we get the new one. The reason for there, you see the pool, we have lawn furniture, pool equipment, that's what, that's their historic.
And you have a pad there now that you're going to put the shed on?
Yes, yes, yes. And it's been approved, it has a route all around it and everything else. Dean, when we were doing the garage, he came out and approved it.
Sure. Any other questions? Open this to the public, anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in regards to the appeal at forty-five-seventy-three Kirk Caldey Road. For the accessory structure, I move the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all compliance with section forty-two dash seven-six standards because the size of the accessory structure is compatible forty-two dash seven-six standards because the size of the accessory structure is compatible with the adjoining properties based on the fact that several properties with pools have sheds for their pool equipment as well as their outdoor furniture. And then the use of this accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood based on the fact that other neighbors have this. If approved, the motion must include, and will include, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to commencing the installation of the shed. Additional evergreen screenings shall be required to screen the shed from public view, and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the structure at the time of installation for twelve months of the year.
Support. I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you. You have a good evening.
You too. Calling the next item, item seventeen, twelve-fifty Kensington Road.
Good evening. My name is Paige Camito. I'm the athletic director at Academy of the Sacred Heart at twelve-fifty Kensington Road. I'm also joined by our head of school, Mr. Damian Herman, and we are seeking approval to install a fourteen-foot scoreboard on the southeast corner of our lower varsity athletic field, in addition to also installing an eight-foot-by-seven-feet-six-inch-tall shed that would be on the south side of the athletic field set off from the fifty-yard line. The scoreboard does have an audio component to it, so the purpose of that is to be able to play pregame, or to be able to have pregame announcements. And that shed's main purpose is to house the audio amplifier equipment. The shed will also be painted a dark evergreen color, so it won't be that white, that stark white color. Upon recommendation from the township, we did meet with our north and south side neighbors to address some of their concerns that have been brought to light throughout this process. We are continuing to work with them in collaboration and partnership to see this project moving forward.
And so what were those concerns that were voiced?
Mainly the screening component. So both structures will be screened to height, so we will have fourteen-foot arborvitae screening the scoreboard, and then eight-foot arborvitae that will be screening the shed. And the other concern was the sound. So there is a max decibel level with the sound equipment to one hundred and thirty decibels. Obviously, we will not be playing it that loud. We will keep within the township ordinance, or the township recommendations for sound.
Any other questions from the board?
I do. So the planning commission previously had listened to some of the complaints or some of the concerns the neighbors had, and particularly the maintenance, and then the time prior to games and things like that, that your audio equipment will be in use. Are there any parameters that you would suggest that would address those concerns specifically?
So we have been working with the neighbors in terms of addressing the maintenance issues, and so those are, we're already looking to remove trees and reinstall some trees to height, to take care of some of those concerns. As far as the playing of pregame music or the announcing component, national anthem, again, I'm looking for the township's recommendation on the level at which you feel would be acceptable. We also, I mean, we don't have lights on the field. There will, the latest you could possibly hear sound would be at like six p.m.
Right, and then it means school gets out at, what, two-thirty or something like that?
Two forty-five, three fifteen, depending on the learning community.
Start approximately when?
Typically, we start our games around four-thirty or five o'clock.
Okay, so maybe...
So that would start about forty-five minutes before. The pregame announcements would be five minutes before the game.
Now, are there games on the weekend as well?
There could be. There could be. It would be typically a morning, Saturday morning game.
But everything's yet earlier, it's certainly not going to be...
Right.
Okay.
Those usually start around ten or eleven o'clock in the morning.
Any other questions?
There's no night, there's no night games in late spring or early fall?
Nothing that really exceeds past six-thirty, seven o'clock.
Because you don't have lights on the field?
No lights. We have no lights.
There's no lights on the field, so...
No. It's a grass field, no lights.
There's no glow ball competition.
No.
Any other questions? I'll open this up to the public. Any one like to comment on this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Motion? Discussion?
Sure.
Okay.
You want to?
Sure, I'll take it.
Perfect. Fighting over the motion, that's great.
So this is a permission request.
Okay, yep.
So in regards to the appeal at twelve-fifty Kensington Road, my son used to go there. I moved that...
Were you part of the fundraiser for the scoreboard?
No, well, he's, well, I don't want to tell you. He's thirty now.
Oh, okay, all right.
My son is thirty years old, so that was a long time. Now I just put how old I am out there, but anyway, so that was a long time ago. So, no. But I did do a lot of fundraising back in the day. Okay, with that said, I moved that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven point six standards because of the use of the accessory structures in terms of the scoreboard, scoreboard and the shed are appropriate for a school. They need a scoreboard for their games, and they'll need the shed for the audio equipment. The accessory should also be non-inductiveal to nearby residents because it's going to be screened at the height of both structures, and they are still working with the community to make sure that they are going to abide by the noise ordinances as well. With that said, if approved, the motion also includes applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. Additional evergreen plantings shall be required to screen the accessory structures from public view, and the plantings must meet or exceed the height of the structures at the time of installation for twelve months of the year.
Support.
Support.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, you're welcome. Calling the next item, item eighteen, five-fifty Hewlett.
Good evening. My name's Jordan Bittigary. I'm the contractor working on the Verner Estates...
This is a different one.
What?
This is a different Hewlett address.
Oh, yeah.
You're like two more up, sorry.
Oh, I saw Hewlett.
I know, I know.
It's confusing.
I was here.
That threw me for a little bit of a loop.
Everyone's jumping the gun on these agenda items. Yeah. It's because of the six-thirty start time.
Well, good evening. Thanks, everybody. My name is Paul Dieters. I'm with Metro Signs and Lighting, one-one-four-four-four, Colts Avenue in Warren. Before you hear this evening, on behalf of the Operating Engineers Union, they're looking to replace a severely outdated sign that they've had there for a number of years, a wooden sign that is basically fallen apart, that one that says five-fifty there, and they had another real estate one adjacent to it. Moving into this building and would like something to identify this to their membership, here before you for a setback variance. In essence, with the setback, the sign would basically have to be even with the parking lot. There's a severe slope downward from the road there and very mature trees. Our only option would be to put it into that island that would be basically perpendicular to the road. It's a very narrow island. If there's any kind of snow plowing or anything, it'd be difficult to see, plus it's so far down. This is at the end of a, basically a dead-end street with virtually no traffic at the far end, so they're just hoping that instead of having to cut a bunch of trees down to get this thing to match the setback that you'd grant some legitimacy for that.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Is this going to be lit sign?
It's non-illuminated.
Perfect.
I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Love to make a motion.
That'd be great. Thank you.
In regards to the appeal at five-fifty Hewlett Drive, for the dimensional variance encroaching twenty-two feet into the required twenty-five-foot setback, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with a strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of where the positioning is of the road easement, as well as the setbacks would put it to where people couldn't even see it and/or would not be able to maintain the parking lot appropriately. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by the reason of, first, nobody here is complaining. All the neighbors are going to be commercial or industrial, and then there's no illumination. Unique circumstances of this property have been demonstrated, given the fact that we're trying to keep the trees. We like trees here in Bloomfield, so we're trying to minimize the impact to the nature. And then this is not self-created because the road easement, as well as the location of the parking lot and the island were not built by you. If approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to commencing the installation.
Second. So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Calling item nineteen-two-four-zero-five South Telegraph.
Terrific. Well, right, back again. I want to have a different case here on behalf of Golling Dealership. Mr. Golling is here with me, and Matt Godfrey, the GM of the dealership, in case you have any questions of them. But once again, as you can see here, they had a sign that was back in the access road getting back to Costco. It was damaged, and basically what they'd like to do is replace the sign pretty much in the exact same spot as where it had been previously. If we were to move it back farther, it would be into a nice landscaping area that they have. Other thing is, it's a little bit different configuration. The previous sign sat basically at ground level. Anytime we had any snow, it was blocked. In addition to that, it was really tough with landscaping equipment. This sign has a nice decorative base that goes with it. Much more aesthetically pleasing, it'll be a much nicer-looking piece. The actual identification is going down in size, but just the way the township calculates the area, it's just a hair larger than what the previous one was. But that's really just due to the base or the pedestal that's going to get it up off of the ground.
So the sign's the same, it's the pedestal that's bigger.
It's a little different configuration. I think in your packet you have there a picture... In fact, I have it, if it's okay to approach the board with this.
We can turn on our overhead.
Oh. You can see, it was very plain-looking. It just sat right at grade. What you have in the packet there is a much nicer-looking, modern sign, much more functional.
Yeah, and more visible, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. So I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on...
In regards to the appeal at twenty-four-oh-five South Telegraph Road, for the forty-foot ground sign encroaching ten feet in the required twenty-five-foot setback, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with a strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because not only would it not be visible to their business, it'd be pushing back into a mature landscaping that's been there for a while. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by the reason of, this sign has already been here, been approved by us for several years. Unique circumstances of this property have been demonstrated, given the fact that, again, they're trying to make sure this is far enough away so that snow plowing and any type of maintenance for the road will not be impeding the sign, as well as, again, the sign was already here. And again, this is not self-created due to the fact that, I hope you guys didn't damage your own sign to replace it, but somebody damaged your sign and you're just replacing it to advertise for your business.
Support.
With that, all applications for necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to commencing installation.
So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Go green.
It's going to be a tough one.
It's been a tough season so far.
Good to see you. Put it out there.
I think Michigan State was like a twenty-one-point favorite three years ago and won, so you never know.
Number twenty.
Yeah, you never know. You need a monsoon or some other...
We need a snowstorm.
Snowstorm. All right, calling item twenty, five-five-five Hewlett.
Sorry, I jumped the gun there.
That's all right.
I was a little excited.
It's understandable.
Again, my name's Jordan Bittigary. I'm the contractor doing the Verner Estates water main replacement for the township currently, and we're requesting, well, we've been using this property that HRC owns for our temporary staging area to aid the project. And I guess we're, I'm officially hoping to get your okay to continue to use it for the project.
And the deadline for your request, you're going to be...
We should be there till December, and then the restoration would occur in the spring to plant the grass back.
So, because we have to put an actual date in the motion, so it's December thirty-first?
Yeah, it would be safe, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd love to make a motion.
Okay.
In regards to the appeal at five-five-five Hewlett Drive, for the, I don't know if I could say accessory structure, but for the use of vacant land to be used for temporary outdoor storage and construction materials, I move the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven-six standards because the use of this type of vacant property is appropriate to the neighborhood. Again, this is a commercial industrial area, and you're doing this so that you can continue to aid us in making sure we do a great job on the Verner Estates water, under budget, under time, right? Isn't that the goal?
Yes.
It's part of this. No, so obviously that's what we're doing here. So if the motion is approved, again, the temporary outdoor construction materials will be permitted until December thirty-first, and then after that, you'll have to restore it.
Just a note, the restoration would occur like in April, like with weather permits?
With weather permitting.
Yeah.
When weather permitting.
Yes.
So we had a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So Matt, did you want to come and present your two? Which I think is, is it five and nine? Five and nine? Okay. So our meetings now start at six-thirty. I don't know if that is what...
That's what I realized just now.
Yeah.
I'm like, man, in like six minutes, they went through like ten cases.
No, no. I'm fast, so I'm not that fast.
Oh, you didn't know about the time change.
Yeah, I couldn't believe it. Anyway, thank you for commenting to me. Matt Mosher, representing homeowners at nine-five-nine West Harsdale. Fairly straightforward request. This is for a sport court with a six-foot fence around it, or a ball stop, I should say, a pergola viewing area off to the side, and a gas fire pit. Like always, we made sure that the court complies with the setback requirements. We have large evergreen trees being planted around the court, so neighbors won't have to look at it. And then from the fire pit, same thing on the other side, plenty of nice screening, and like I said, fairly straightforward, so happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to speak on this item?
I'm Rhonda Schwartz. I live at five-sixty fifty-sixty Pine Valley Road in Bloomfield Hills. I've lived there for the last eleven years. I wanted to speak about the opposition to the variance request for nine-five-nine West Harsdale Road. They are requesting a thirty-foot, sixty-foot sports court, the pergola, and the gas fire pit. So there's a longstanding unresolved issue regarding drainage and runoff. This project raises serious questions about stormwater runoff and damage and drainage, issues that the township's been aware of for several years, particularly finding the development of nine-five-five West Harsdale's road. Ken Nish at nine-fifty-five Lone Pine Road and my husband, Jeff Schwartz, have raised these concerns with several township officials over the past two and a half years. Despite our ongoing communications or knowledge of the issue, there is still no permanent solution in place. And yet, here we are again evaluating another development proposal that will add more And yet, here we are again, evaluating another development proposal that will add more surface and more runoff, without addressing the underlying problems that already affect the neighborhood. So, what's happening to the ground? During and after rainstorms, Lone Pine Road create, is creating dangerous driving conditions, the floods, forcing vehicles to swerve or slowly abruptly, including township fire and police vehicles. The runoff from Lone Pine Road flows directly into Ken Nish's property. At 955 Lone Pine Road, overflows his pond, and spills onto our front lawn, turning it into a drainage basin. This is not an occasional issue, it happens every time it rains. The issue, the source of this water is not just from Lone Pine, but it originates from the accumulated runoff from multiple properties, specifically the new big homes along Harsdale's road. There's been no clear or enforceable runoff migration plan presented for the proposed structure at Harsdale. Given what we already know, and what the township already knows, it would be highly irresponsible to approve new variances without requiring that the existing infrastructure problems be resolved first. Zoning exists to preserve the livability, character, and safety of our neighborhoods, allowing oversized accessory structures with no plan for managing environmental impacts determines their mission. The township must not continue to approve new development in this quarter while residents bear the cost, literally and figuratively, of unchecked runoff and flooding. Let me also say that these proposed structures, especially the 1,800-foot square foot sports court, are disappropriate to the character and scale of the neighborhood. This is not a minor enhancement, it is a major recreational installation that would introduce increased runoff from the additional man-made concrete and structures impacting the surrounding homes. It is well within the board's authority to require appropriate environmental planning to uphold the standards set forth in the township's ordinance. I'm asking that the board deny the request variance for 959 West Harsdale Road at this time, require a formal site-specific runoff immigration plan as part of any further consideration, work with the township staff, including Mr. Almas and the engineering team, to develop a comprehensive solution to the drainage issues that's affecting this area, particularly the properties on Harsdale Road, which is impacting safety on Lone Pine Road, and my property on 5060 Pine Valley Road, and Ken Nish's property on 955 Lone Pine Road. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else I'd like to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing, let the applicant respond.
Drainage is certainly a big issue these days on all projects. One thing that we've been doing actually is, we've been working with the township on a enhanced civil engineered site plan for this particular site. In that, as you guys know, when any kind of permit is submitted, the township has a, experts on their team that evaluate that site plan and ensure that the drainage patterns are sufficient for the improvements that are being proposed. So, I absolutely have compassion for, for her concerns, and they're certainly valid, but on any of the projects that we do, they're all fully civil engineered, engineered for all the drainage. In this particular case, you know, that's where you see those dotted lines just past the court, that's a natural features buffer, so there is actually kind of like a stream area down there. So regardless if we don't do anything, or have a court or not, you know, the water's going there. A court of this size, I mean, it's, is it going to flood the neighborhood? No, it's going to add a little bit more runoff, but nothing significant from my experience. But what I can tell you, and to, on any project we do, is there will, you know, there is a fully civil engineered plan that the township will thoroughly review, and from my experience recently, will not issue a permit unless they feel that it's fully taking into account the additional runoff and the drainage patterns. So, that's something that they have a, you know, stopgap with, to make sure that these type of improvements hopefully don't cause more issue.
Was the staff aware of any of the...
Yeah, I can comment briefly on a recent email that I actually just received from Mr. Ken, Kenneth Nish, referring to, this has been an on, from my understanding, it's been an ongoing issue with a lot of the residents in that area. And this, this was actually, has been occurring for quite a while, from my understanding. This was, there were conversations between Patty and Chris regarding the flooding issue, which, at that time, there was a conversation with Oakland County regarding them having to clean out the drainage under Lone Pine. And Mr. Nish refers to that, that since that was mitigated, that the, it's been somewhat mitigated. So, the, this being brought up to our attention now, this was previously a drainage issue that has been occurring, and there was conversations, as I stated previously, it's now being brought to our attention that there's still some ongoing drainage issues in this area. And since Mr. Nish sent out this email this week, there has been another follow-up contact made with Oakland County Road Commission to help address some of the drainage concerns that are occurring within the, within the roadway. I can't speak specifically in regards to other drainage concerns that are occurring, or what's happening on this specific site. I can just respond to what I'm hearing from the applicant, that they're addressing drainage concerns and that requirement for their, for their permits to middle. But I, I do believe that, based on my most recent email, that there are still some ongoing concerns with multiple homes in the area. However, I'm not, I'm not prepared to talk about the impact of this specific site on the overall drainage.
No, no, I was just asking if you had knowledge.
Yeah, but there is knowledge of a drainage issue.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, that was a very long answer.
That's okay.
I apologize.
That's, that's important factual background.
I could've said yes, we are aware.
That's important factual background, thank you. Okay. Any other questions of Matt regarding the drainage, or anything else about this?
I guess just a discussion from the board. I've brought this up with Andrea several times about water mitigation and water runoff. And as the applicant has stated, as well as Andrea has confirmed, that they do have to get civil engineering or a survey unfiled to do stormwater management. So when some of these plans were put together, and some of this was done, these were 40 and 50 years ago. So now they have to be brought up to new codes, and again, while their applicant will have to hire their own civil engineer, it is then reviewed by ours. So there is a vetting process to ensure that not only the right experts are looking at it, but we are adhering to the standards of today, not 50 years ago. So, in theory, based on our more stringent standards, some of these sites will actually create more improvement, because there are mitigation techniques that they have to now adhere to, that they didn't 60 years ago. So, that has always been my concern with these, so I'm glad you brought this up. It's also a new site, so it also has a civil engineer part of the new site, as well as a site plan and plot plan, and adding this to it will be required as well, which you know, as well as Andrea and I have talked about.
And the township has gotten really good about getting more stringent on dealing with these water issues, because to your point, they are a big issue. And I've just seen in the recent reviews, fortunately we have a lot of projects here that they've really been watching that, which is, which is a good thing, right? And, so, so anyway, you know, we can only do as much as we can do, which is, you know, hire professionals to do a full engineered site plan. The township has their own professionals that review it. And, you know, to your point, some of these sites are probably being improved, while others are a problem, but we always try to make an improvement on the jobs that we're working on.
So, again, I always go back to the experts, right? I'm not a civil engineer, so I can't speak to it. That's why we hire experts and require them to come up with the application. So, you know, my biggest complaint on this is I don't think the screening is adequate, to be quite honest. Like, even on your screening plan, like, I don't think there's enough screening to adequately screen this from all sides, based on...
We're happy to add whatever, and I know the inspectors are good at that now, too. They don't want to see...
So, I just want to make sure, because obviously, any, any trees we add help soak up any of the water, which helps mitigate some of that issue, but it also helps with some of the noise that some of the neighbors have been talking about.
Well, I mean, I'm glad that you shared that information, I'm glad that you're sensitive to it, and I'm also very compassionate about what you, you shared, because the, and I'm very, very sensitive to water runoff, because of all of these flat surfaces, these really large homes that are being built. And then, we're also getting a lot more rain. I mean, we have droughts, but then when it rains, it pours. And we see lots of floods, and so, I just want to just make sure that we are very sensitive to this one runoff issue. And so the more we talk about it, and the more we're sensitive to it, I think, the better. So I just wanted to add that as well, because that is a major concern. I've seen it with my own property, and I've seen it with others, and this is something that comes up very often. And we also, with Andrea had mentioned, that this is something that is known. So, I'm glad you're looking into it, and hopefully if, and I'll just put this out there as well, that even after we have civil engineers look at it, after it's been mitigated, after it's been permitted, that if there is an issue after, that there is some kind of follow-up on that as well. And I think that's fair to our community, that, you know, a lot of times we think we're mitigating, but if we continue to see drain, drainage issues, or runoff issues that haven't been mitigated, or maybe we didn't anticipate, that we have some kind of follow-up or follow-through on that, so.
Does anybody have a problem with the six-foot fence versus, on the fence on this?
I don't have any.
And is this a fence or netting?
This is just sport court netting.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Six-foot.
Three.
I think it's appropriate for...
So do we have a motion? I think we're ready.
Yeah.
Who wants to? Jump on it.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay, great.
After I just made my speech.
Yeah, I think you should.
All right. So, and I'll start with a permission request first, in regards to the appeal at 959 West Harsdale Road, for the accessory structure of a pergola, gas fire pit, and sports court. I move that the request be approved as submitted, based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards, because of the use of the accessory structures appropriate for the neighborhood. Again, these are very common accessory structures, and the accessory structure shall not, shall not be objectional to nearby residents, because they will be adequately screened, as well as they will also be taken in consideration, any drainage or runoff issues, through civil engineering and permits. In terms of the dimensional variance, at the same location, for the six-foot tall fence, exceeding the requirement of four feet, I also move that that be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, because any netting fence shorter than six feet tall would prevent reasonable use of the sports court. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, because it will be also screened, in any circumstance with the property, with the existing floor pan, where the sports courts will be located, this is appropriate for a six-foot netting fence, and because of that, it is not self-created. With that said, if approved, the motion also includes applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to commencing installation. Additional evergreen planting shall be required to screen the sports court fences, pergola, and gas pit from public view, and the planting must exceed or meet the height of the structure at the time of installation for 12 months of the year. There is also no illumination permitted on the sports court, and this use of the sports court is limited to daytime hours.
Support.
I have a motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. So calling the next item, item nine, 5385 Long Meadow.
Okay, similar situation. This one's on a large lot on Long Meadow. This is actually for a tennis court. And similar to the, the case that I heard a while ago, whenever we do a tennis court, we put the netting at 10 feet, so that the tennis balls have a better chance of staying within the court. The only change that you guys don't see here is we actually moved the court into 20 feet off the property line, instead of 16, for the neighborhood association setback, so it's actually a little further in the property. We have it fully screened, and I should add that there are two pergolas over some seating areas as well. But again, everything in keeping, in keeping with what else is in this neighborhood and what's out there, so happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Open this to the public, anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back for questions, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Ask away.
So, first, did you get approval from the HOA?
Yeah, we sent all the plans over to Brian Bachelor, Butchler, or whatever.
So, our notes show that you did not receive approval from the HOA.
He gave us, he gave me, I talked to him just the other day, he gave me verbal on the phone, so he has all the plans. Why, did they, did someone write you or something?
It's written at the bottom of our agenda, so let me pull the file.
So maybe before you made those adjustments?
Do you have any things, Matt?
No, I mean, we, we sent him, I mean, I have the emails right here, back and forth with them.
So, so what, I guess why township looks into that?
Maybe they didn't submit it or something to you guys, I don't know.
So...
Let's see what we got.
We'll, we'll let them look into that, first question. Second question is, as you heard, we talked to the gentleman before you, did you hear that one?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was talking about, yep.
So, he reduced his sports court, because I know you guys say it's 60 by 120. We have a problem with these sports courts being sizing. So the other gentleman on overly was able to reduce it, that still allowed that runoff for the running for those tennis balls, and reduced it in order to, what, 58 by 106, so 108.
Yep, 108 by 52.
Okay. So the letter that we have states that, as the BE, BI, BEIA Architectural Director, I received notification from the township, a request is submitted to go before the zoning board. I understand you'd like to build a sports court on your property at 5385 Long Meadow. For reference, I've included a copy of the neighborhood deed restrictions. The deed restriction speaks to some differences regarding setbacks. The Bloomfield Estates Improvement Association requires a 25-foot for any permanent outbuilding on the property, slightly stricter than the township's 16-foot. As a result, this necessitates modifications to the placement of your sports court. When the drawings have been redrafted, which I think is what Matt's referring to, please contact me directly for an approval stamp prior to resubmitting to the township for their consideration and approval. So it looks like we received this letter on October 7th. It sounds like maybe there's been more recent conversations, you just spoke to it being further off the lot line. So are you indicating now that you would meet the 25-foot deed restrictions?
Yeah, we adjusted, correct. We, so, we did two things, we made the court a little bit smaller. So right now it's 16, and so we made the court smaller to get to the 25, and that's what we resubmitted to them. Everything too is relative, I mean, that last lot we looked at is quite a bit smaller than this lot. So, I get where you're coming from, but, you know, everything's relative. So, the court right now would be nine feet smaller, so 60 by, what is that, 108 or whatever it is, or 110. You know, I guess the, what's your concern about the, I mean, there's a lot of tennis courts that I've done here in the township without too much trouble on smaller lots? Is it just a runoff concern, or...
I guess there's a bigger issue with sports courts in totality, which is something that we're going to try to address either at the ZVA or at the township board, so that we either we can streamline this process, or make it more cut and dry for not only developers, but residents as they move into their area.
Sure.
I think that would make it easier for them to understand the rules. Because right now, it's kind of a plug and play at times.
Right.
But either way, so, because I thought you said 20 feet off the property line, so you're saying it's 25 feet off?
It's, it's whatever the, their setback was, 25 or whatever it was.
Okay.
You know, that's, so that's what we sent back to them.
So, 25 off the rear setback? Or both sides?
The rear's like, I think like 60 feet or something like that. It's that closest corner there that you see?
Yeah.
That's 25.
Okay.
Yep. So right there, in, in your picture, it shows 16, but the, the plan that got submitted to them is, is at, whatever theirs is 20, 25, or whatever it is.
Okay. It's just hard, we're going off the plan you submitted, so because now you modified...
I'm with you, yeah.
So, okay. So, since the other gentleman was able to make his modified to that other, why are you and/or your client unable to make it to the 58 by 108?
I'd have to talk to my client. I mean, I'm, this is the first time I'm dealing with this here, in terms of asking us to make some, that smaller, because usually, I mean, I've done a lot of tennis courts here in the township. So, standard size for tennis court, 60 by 120, in that other case, obviously, they had a, a smaller lot. So, I can talk to the client, but from my expertise, I don't see that big of an issue at this size of a lot with a, with a normal-sized tennis court. You know, in terms of drainage and stuff, we'll obviously have a whole civil engineered plan that deals with all that, so I, I don't know what the, if, if nobody sees the court from the outside, what the, you know, I'm trying to get at what the concern is. I mean, we're not, we're not doing anything different than we've done in the past, we're not trying to jam a 60 by 120 on a small village lot or something like that, which we actually have that, too. So, I totally respect where you're coming from, I'm just, this is the first time I'm ever hearing this come up. And any project that we do, and it's, we do it at the highest professional level there is, we don't screw around with any type of shenanigans here, you know? And so, anything I design is going to be proportional to a space, it's going to feel right. I design is going to be proportional to a space. It's going to feel right. It's not going to look overdone. I know there's plenty of houses in this community that look like a parking lot. That's not the level that we design at. So, I can talk to them, but I, I don't think our request is unreasonable based on the size of this lot. I mean, it's a huge lot.
I have a quick question. Are you done?
Sure.
So, I may have misheard you, but I would like some clarification. When I heard you earlier say something along the lines that the length of the sport court would be reduced by nine feet based upon keeping it within setback?
Right. That's correct.
So the nine feet from the 120 gets you at 111.
That's right.
And so, just for reference, is that's not too far off of what the board was saying. It's kind of what we're comfortable approving. I know you have precedents, but that doesn't necessarily apply to this specific case. So, I mean, we were asking for something close to 58, which is two feet smaller than your width, by 108, which is very similar to the 111.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how you feel about that. I'm just throwing it out there as, it's now we're negotiating feet versus...
I, I, any of you know me, I'm here to work with you guys. I'm here to represent my client.
Right. You do great work, so this is not an insult.
You know, I'm not, I'm not here to try to be argumentative at all. I'm just here to present. So, if the board, if, I guess, similar, similar to what you're saying, Chris, is that going forward, it's good for guys like us to know what the board, you know, because I don't want to come in front of you. It's like the last case. I come in front of you with a six-foot fence, because I know that's what's okay.
I appreciate that, yes.
Right? And so I want to come in front of you with cases that, I'm not, I'm here to work with you guys, not against you guys. So, if that's what the board's going to do on these tennis courts, I'll just tell every client that it's got to be no more than, let's say, 110 by 58. And it, but it's also not, it's, it's property by property specific, right? If you've got a huge lot, it might be different. If, if that's where the board feels today, I'm sure that reducing it two feet, foot on each side, and putting it at 110 or whatever you said, it's totally fine. I'm not, you know, I'm, I'll make a decision for my client. And if that's where the overall board feels, I'm good with it.
Well, I mean, thank you for, you know, talking about that. I'm not sure, how does the board feel? Is this the time to discuss it?
Yeah, I mean, is there any input from the planning commission, you know, in terms of, you know, what's the master plan? Can everybody have something like this, and it's just something that we endorse, or?
Well, I sit on the planning commission, and that planning commission doesn't necessarily monitor types of sports courts.
So, so I looked this up, right, so, so I think Matt's right. So I've looked up the dimensions of a court, and the recommended buffer area gets you to 120 by 60. Now, that doesn't mean we can approve that, but if you're starting with that as sort of the standard, what's the why, then, as to why that would bother us to give somebody a standard-sized court, right? There are more, I've been doing this for 20 years, there are more and more things going into people's backyards. There's not only this, there's kitchenettes, there's TV walls, that we have all sorts of things now. So we have to think this through, as to, what would the why be, Matt's got a good point, if it's a big lot or whatever, to have that what's considered a standard court with buffer area? What's the why behind it? Right? So we have drainage. We just dealt with that in the last issue. So, but it's got, right, we already went same thing. We said the last one's here, this has got to be engineered. We have to have the property drainage. Seems like he's got a lot of screening. Maybe he can add some screening to it. But, you know, if you have, if you have people, I don't play tennis, but if, if people enjoy that as an activity, and they're serious about it, they're going to want a standard court. They're going to want to play doubles. They're going to want to play singles. And they're going to want to have enough space around it, so that, you know, if you're a really good player, right, I guess you've got to move back for the serve. So you need more room. Again, I don't play, but I watch on TV.
I have a question, maybe, along this front. Like, if what we're going at really is about runoff, like the amount of your...
All of our lots that we're paying, bringing up.
Mm-hmm. I have a question for the township, because we are obviously a zoning board and not tasked with drainage.
Sure.
But is it, and it may get everybody to a point of understanding what the goal is, is it, from the engineering department, anywhere near a goal that all water should be maintained on your own property?
Oh, that's always the, that's always the goal. And that's the requirement, is that you can't, the issue becomes, and I'm sure Scott's probably familiar, familiar with this as well, the issue becomes, if there is differentiating between what the new runoff is, as long as, the, the way it's written is that you can't add additional runoff.
Increase in runoff.
You can't increase. So, it would, it would be great if we could go back retroactively and make sure there was absolutely zero runoff on adjacent properties.
Everest, yeah.
But our role and responsibility is to make sure that whatever is being newly installed is not increasing or adding to an existing condition.
But engineering can fix that. There could be leach basins and catch...
Oh, drywells, absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
I guess that's my question. What are we designing towards? And those are the things that the engineering department's reviewing.
Well, no, building, our building department, actually. And we are making sure, as Matt noted, we are being much more stringent, based on the feedback we've had. I think we're kind of at a point right now where there's...
Well, you have to be based on the number of things that are going, right?
Exactly, so I think...
You could have a whole row of tennis courts, right? And then, then what are you going to do?
Yeah.
So I, I, I think in conversations that I've had with some, is I think that this is going to be a greater discussion. That's probably going to come back for some ordinance amendment considerations, but I think that this is a good starting point. But again, that doesn't necessarily answer the issues related to this submittal. But I think that this is being brought to, is a, is a higher recognition at the township level, overall.
So is there a chance, Matt, that this, they're, they might need drywells or items here in their drainage plan?
Yeah, I actually just got the, the civil engineer drawing back yesterday from Horizon, and he's got, he's adding another catch basin and a drywell, because to Andrea's point, they're doing a good job now of really reviewing and saying, is all this water that is being added or redirected, is it being handled? And so, you know, I mean, commending the building department, they're doing a good job of that. So on this one, we had to add another catch basin and a drywell to accommodate the extra runoff, and, you know, just be sure we're not putting that water on other people's properties.
Well, I think for the zoning board, because we're not going to be there for that, but we know that's the mission, that it is site-by-site specific.
Yeah, I think that's, that's what we've always said to people.
And the proportion of a tennis court is proportioned to the lot. And I find this one quite a bit different than the earlier one.
Yeah.
I can see that.
Should I make a motion?
Sure.
Okay. It's a good discussion.
No, absolutely.
Are you asking for a 10-foot fence?
No, they only want six.
No, he said 10.
No, this one's the 10, like the other, here's a tennis court.
Because it's full tennis?
Right.
Okay. In rep, I've got to find my title sheet.
It's number nine, too.
Number nine.
Okay. So I'll start with the permission request. In respect to the proposal for 5385 Long Meadow, permission request for a sports court fence in pergola, I move that the application be approved per the drawings attached, the drawings submitted. Based on the information provided, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards, because the size of the accessory structure is a standard tennis court on a lot that is appropriately sized for a full-size tennis court. The accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood. There are a number of them, and will continue to be in the township. The location of the accessory structure does not hinder adjacent use of property of the neighbors, and is harmonious with the neighborhood, as well as the fence proposed. I also make a motion to approve the dimensional variance for the 10-foot-tall screen fencing. To approve the dimensional variance for the 10-foot-tall fencing, I move the variance to be approved as requested, based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty. The 10-foot height is required for the stated use of the tennis court that's being approved, and compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance, it would be unduly burdensome for the use proposed. Also, there's no injustice in the neighbors, as it will be screened to the full height. And additional to both the permission and the dimensional variance, it must be 25 feet off the lot lines per the association approvals. Should the motion pass, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits obtained prior to commencing installation.
Support.
So we have a motion and support. Now, discussion. So in your, in your motion, I believe you, you said, there's no injustice, because it's going to be screened to the height. So you're clear on that, right? So it's got to be screened to the height at the time it's put in. Any other discussion?
What about illumination and daytime hours?
Yeah.
It's no illumination.
I'd like to add that to the amendment, that the hours of use are daytime, and no illumination is included.
Support the amendment.
And then, the only other discussion is, we're not approving it as submitted, because originally it was submitted as 60 by 120. It is 60 by 111.
Exactly, yep.
Yep. And I'll meet the association setbacks.
Yep.
Support.
All right, so I have a motion, support, amendment, support, clarification. I think we're going to get the minutes right on this, right? We got the numbers. He's got AI going back there. He's got it all. All right, so all those in favor, as amended and clarified? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted, as clarified.
Thanks.
All right. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Are there any more items?
Does anyone in the audience have something else? You do? What, what is your address?
5830 Snowshoe Circle.
Snowshoe Circle?
Did we put another one to the end?
No.
Did you receive a notice in the paper, in the mail, for tonight's meeting?
I didn't see it in here.
Do you happen to have your letter? Do you have any notice with you? On the, on the agenda.
I didn't think they were sitting there for entertainment.
I know, very patient, too.
Yeah, very patient.
5830 Snowshoe Circle on the agenda for November 11th.
November 11th meeting.
Oh, you've sat here all night.
I'm so sorry. Well, at least you, at least you got a lot of tips.
I'm sorry, we would have known if you told you, but that's our, jets are in November. It looks like you're towards the end of November, so you would have never gotten a notice for tonight's meeting.
Well, perhaps you could explain how the notices have to go.
Yeah, I, I guess I'd have to see that letter.
Can you get our server?
We just don't have any materials to look at.
And we didn't know if you're...
What's happening, everybody?
No.
Hasn't been noticed.
And they gave us some time in the morning. And we told the city today that we have a zoning board appeal. Today's the date. I don't know what happened.
Okay, so, there's a miscommunication, because we also have, he's checking the list of all the notices that went out for this month, and we're not seeing your address. So I would suggest you contact our department and come in. I certainly, we certainly can make sure you're at the front of the agenda for November, as you sat through all night. We can put you on the top of the agenda for November, but we don't have a record of ever sending out a notice to you. So, if there was a miscommunication, I would suggest that you, actually, can we talk after the meeting, tonight, instead of right now, during the meeting? Let's talk after the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
We apologize for that. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some moves?
Well, I can't make the motion. Okay, so I have, so Dan, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.